Everybody would like to get started. First, I'd like to thank everybody for coming and taking part in things going on in the community. I'd like to thank the Rastor having us here. And we've been, what, several months now going all over the county. And we've been here at Skyline once. Thank you a little better turnout this time than we did last. We really appreciate that. We're here to go over the facts of, you know, the reason we proposed the one cent sales tax. You know, we're by no means trying to talk to anybody into voting for or against it, but we're supporting our proposal with facts. And we've got a little bit of business to take care of in a regular meeting. And after that, after you've got some of the facts that he wants to go over, and then we'll open it up for a question and answer session. So I can go ahead and ask you.
All right. So we'll go ahead and get started. We'll call our Jackson County Commission Work Session for July 20th to order. Have our roll call. District one, Mr. Guffey.
Present.
District two, Mr. Bimble.
Present.
District three, Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Corr, Mr. Leble.
Present.
Chairman also present. All right, we have a court present. We'll have our invocation by Mr. Jeff Arnold and our pledge by Mr. Phil Fettler.
Let's pray. How gracious and we follow, Lord, we thank you once again for this day. Lord, we thank you for the mighty blessings you afford us. Lord, we thank you for this community. Lord, we thank you for this county and this country. Lord, we just are thankful to see these people here today interested. Lord, we're just thankful for a united commission. Lord, we just pray that you just give them blessings and just give them patience. Lord, just everything we do, Lord, we pray that it would bring honor and glory to you. In this encircled name we pray, amen.
Amen. My large legion, simply thank you from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you've got the agenda that went out, the email that then didn't have a meeting item, that's been changed because I didn't think we'd be prepared to move forward with that. That is on the work session now. So we have two items on the work session agenda. We'll entertain a motion to approve the agendas presented.
Some move.
Motion right of a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. We've had no one sign up to speak in addition for this part of the meeting. We'll move straight into our discussion items. And the first one is the county engineer's contract. You all are sent an email today, if you didn't get it last week, for a temporary contract, or contract for the assistant engineer. This is something that has been discussed. I guess the fact that we've not had a county engineer for the past few months, or a couple of months. So if everyone would please review that, I'd like to see if we could move forward with that next week. And right now, that's for your review. If you have any questions or comments on that, then we can discuss that at the following meeting. So are there any questions or comments at this time on that? I don't know if everyone's had time to review it or not today, but... Okay, if there's none, we'll again discuss that next week at our meeting. Next item is Ms. Kim Chapman. She had a discussion or question for her. Comment.
I just have a question about the, that there was a local law passed down in Montgomery in its section forty-five, thirty-six, eighty. And the law, and it was passed in April fourth, two thousand four, by the previous commission under Mr. Tidmore. It wasn't you guys, and I don't think you guys really know that much about it. And if you look at number five, and the law reads, additional court costs in the amount of ten dollars per day shall be assessed and collected upon conviction against each person incarcerated or booked in the Jackson County jail. So after they've been convicted, they're supposed to be, that cost is supposed to go into effect after the conviction. And when a defendant is convicted, he enters into a contract with the court. And there's an issue that is called the next post-facto deal. It's Article One, Section Ten of the United States Constitution. And it's also in the state of Alabama constitution too. I've got it down here for you. And basically it said, and my question, and what I want to know is, does this impose a daily fee upon prisoners after they've been already sentenced in front of the judge when they go to be sentenced constitute an increase in punishment after they've been convicted? I want to wonder if you could ask the attorney general if that would, if that's breaking the constitution? Because they're supposed, that sentence is supposed to happen right there when they're convicted. But you can't get that sentence to happen until after you know how many days they have stayed in the jail. And then I wanted to bring up the section of the Alabama Constitution, Article One, Section Twenty states that no person, person shall be imprisoned for a debt. And what is a debt? And I looked this up in the Blacks Law. And a debt is a sum of money due by contract. Now, I've been told by some say that they're not going to be jailed because of the debt. They're going to be jailed because there's a not complying with the judge's orders. And that's kind of like splitting hairs because the fact remains, there would be no order if there was no debt. So I wanted to leave this with you to see if Mr. Porter can do something up and give me some answers.
Okay. As we discussed, yeah, we'll take a look at that and see what can be moved. Do you have a question on here, a question you wanted to ask? Is that listed on here?
No, I just wanted to, I just wanted to find out if it's going against the constitution of the state and the federal constitution. That's mainly.
I see. Okay.
I just want to see, you know, if it's going against the constitution if we're breaking the law.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or comments on that?
I have a question. If you're asking for an attorney general's opinion or the county attorney's opinion?
Well, actually, the attorney general or the county would be fine, either, you know, both of them. But I know that the law is law. Opinions don't stand up in law.
Well, in order to get an attorney general's opinion, we'll have to have the questions that you want to ask to go to the attorney general.
Okay, I can do that. I'll email it to Bobby if it's okay to be, all right.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. So that concludes the discussion items for our meeting agenda. We'll move on then to discussion of the sales tax and save our reports for afterwards. I'll stand if that's okay. Do want to quickly go over some of the facts and figure some information about county finances, this sales tax, talk about where we want to spend some of these dollars. And of course, the real reason we're here is to answer any questions that anyone here may still have about the sales tax or thoughts or concerns that you have. This is obviously incredibly important. We've been throughout the county over the past several months trying to put the information out there, as Mr. Bimble said, sharing those facts. And I do want to thank, we've got actually a couple of mayors here today, but thank you to Skyline also for hosting us here in the town hall. Thank you to the council members also. And we, again, we appreciate the relationships that we have with our communities. And we appreciate the opportunity to share this information with you all tonight, to come out and take your time to do that. So I'm going to jump right in, go through this very quickly as we tend to do, and then open it up. We'll talk questions, comments, concerns about this or anything that the county has going on. So first thing I do want to clear up, one thing that continues to surprise some folks is that the county gets no sales tax right now. What is, I don't know what the sales tax in Skyline is. It is two percent. So right now, it's eight percent within the town limits. Is that correct? So for Skyline, you've got four cents of that eight that goes to the state, two cents which goes to the town of Skyline, and two cents of the quote unquote county tax goes a hundred percent towards education. The county doesn't get any of that. And that gets split up between the county board and the city board of education. So that's one thing we're trying to get, you know, this is obviously a revenue source we're looking for. But right now, it's a revenue source that we just don't have. We get zero of those total dollars that are spent when you go to the food value or the Dollar General anywhere else, or anywhere in the county when you're spending those dollars. This county government does not get those dollars to support our roadways, to take care of sheriff's departments, support fire departments, or anything else that we do in the process of the business that we do. I won't go too much depth, but as we all know, we've had this budget deficit situation. We've kind of announced it shortly after we were in office. Very high budget deficit, a one point six million dollar deficit. Over time, we've reduced that to three hundred fifty thousand dollars. And the point I'm making that, or want to make in that, is that we have done a lot of work in trying to reduce the cost of operating county government. We've gotten rid of as much waste as we've been able to find. We have cut several staff positions. We've reduced up different contract expenditures that we did not think were getting bang for the buck. So a lot of things went into that process of cutting those dollars to get from that one point six million dollar deficit down to where we're at right now. And we feel like we've been very responsible with the taxpayer dollars. And of course, in going forward with these dollars, and we'll talk about how we're going to spend these dollars from this sales tax, we want to continue to be responsible with how we go through this process. Some information about where do we get our dollars from? Obviously, like I said, we don't get any sales tax. So the biggest revenue sources we have are from the gas tax that funds our public works department in total. And then for our general fund is the property tax and the TBA and LOOP tax. Now, when it comes to TBA and LOOP tax, even the town of Skyline has seen, continued, all our towns and communities have seen decreased dollars from that. For the county government, we've had a drop of four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars since two thousand twelve just in the TBA and LOOP tax. So that's a huge decrease. Our gas tax dropped three hundred thousand dollars in the past forty years. So, you know, these dollars, our revenue, revenues are going down. And of course, the cost to do business is always, and will continue to go up. The cost to pave roads has doubled and tripled for certain types of equipment. And just, you know, the cost of business is going, utilities, whatever else the case may be, we know the cost keeps going up. So the best way I know how to say it is revenues are here, expenses continue to climb, and now revenues are dropping. So with the TBA and LOOP tax drop, with the coal plant closure, we're going to continue to see some drop in that. And we've got to come up with a revenue source to take care of Jackson County and do some of the things, as I stated, that we want to do. Some quick facts about where your money goes. When you go into probate office and renew your driver's license, you pay thirty-six dollars, twenty-five cents. The county only gets a dollar fifty of that. When you go pay for your car tag fee, you did a calculation, someone that lives in Scottsboro, a hundred forty dollar tag fee is what they pay, the county only gets twenty dollars of that. So a very important piece of information is when you write these checks to Jackson County government, Jackson County government does not get all those dollars. This being split up between the state, the city, if you're within a municipality, the county, and education, the hospital, fire departments, out of a small millage tax in place. So those dollars are being split up and separated through a lot of different agencies. And of course, the county government is the one that handles that process. I won't go too detailed about the cost of paving. I will say that we paved twelve miles of road last year. This year, we put the zero dollars and the local dollars into paving. If we were to continue even at last year's rate, it'd take us ninety years to get back to the road we paved last year. So we know that that's not sustainable. We have to come up with some new source, some new way to fund paving and a lot of the other processes that we have. And I do want to talk a little bit more detail. Why are we pursuing a sales tax? We, you know, there's a lot of different ideas that folks have come to us about property tax or tag fees or this, that, or the other. Why are we pursuing a sales tax? So the first thing is with a sales tax is with, as opposed to a property tax, let's say, with a property tax, we have seven and a half mills. The county has a seven and a half mill property tax. We would have to more than double our portion of property tax to get the same amount we're looking at this sales tax. So add an additional nine mills on top of that in order to get the same amount of dollars we're looking at from the sales tax. Now, in addition to that, you look at property tax, property tax does not grow like sales tax does. Sales tax has had a steady growth in Jackson County. Some communities report that even in that two thousand seven, two thousand eight downturn, that they didn't have a downturn. So we continue to see sales tax grow. Where property tax, again, doesn't have that same type of growth or same rate of growth. We looked at some of the numbers from, what, two thousand seven to eleven, I think? There was a slight increase in property tax. And it's been... Go ahead.
One year, I think it was.
One year. Yeah, there's, you know, there's a slight growth there, but it's not near the amount. Plus, in Jackson County, we're unique from a lot of counties. We have a whole lot of property that's been bought up by the state. They don't pay property taxes. And of course, the Tennessee TBA has a whole lot of property which they don't pay those taxes on. So when it comes to property tax, you know, we don't see the bang for the buck there. In addition as to pursuing a sales tax, as why not a property tax? With a sales tax now, all these fishermen and hikers and campers and cabers, all those folks that come into Jackson County that visit us on a daily basis, now they can help support all the services that we provide to all of our county residents. With a property tax or with a tag fee or with any of these other options that are out there, those responsibilities are on Jackson County taxpayers. With a sales tax now, we can spread that responsibility to all these folks that come into Jackson County or visit. And again, these are things municipalities are now benefiting from. The school system, obviously, education benefits from that. We need to be able to participate on that as well. And again, take some of that burden, in the long term, take some of that burden off of the citizens of Jackson County, which that will do. Because with that growth, we should not have to pursue further taxes for the future. So that's a very quick rundown of some of the things of where our dollars come from, what it costs to do some of the business that we do, and why we're pursuing a sales tax. What do we want to use these dollars for? The first thing obviously is, and the biggest amount we want to put towards is paving county roadways. We want to put one point five million dollars worth of paving of county roadways. Like I said, last year, we put zero dollars. So this is going to be a huge, or this year, we put zero local dollars. So this is going to be a huge advancement over this year and even much better than, what, we put four hundred thousand last year? So over three times as much as we did, almost four times as much as we did last year. Plus, looking at doing some of our own paving, which maybe then can expand the number of roadways we pave even further. We, like I said, I've said time and time again, we've got to come up with a new way to pave our roads. Someone mentioned to me, that had to mention to them, why not pursue a five cent gas tax? If we did a five cent gas tax, I think we'd bring in, what, about one, one point one million dollars, one point two million dollars, if we got that three cent of the amount. Right. So even less than that, actually, probably about a million dollars. So even a five cent gas tax is less than what we plan to put forward for paving just for this sales tax. So again, the benefits here as opposed to pursuing five or six different items, we feel is one. Second item, support of provision of resource officers in our schools. When it comes to safety, you know, two huge things about this, obviously. And, you know, the tragedy in Chattanooga, I think, continues to remind us. We see these things constantly. In a sense, I wonder, you know, sometimes if we're not, we don't become immune, we don't think about. But we need to be prepared. We need to have this protection, at least, you know, it's a very small bit of protection, but some amount of protection for the children in our schools. Just to have that asset there, have the resource there. We hopefully prevent any issues from happening or deter anything from happening. But if nothing else, you've got that person there that can respond if there's an immediate need within that school. Also, someone that forms relationships with those students. I've heard some stories about some of the resource officers in Scottsboro and how those officers were, you know, they get to know the students. Those students know they can call on them if there's ever an issue or a concern. So that's the kind of protection that you need there. In addition to that, just the benefit of having more deputies throughout Jackson County. What we're looking at is five, six resource officers. So no, this isn't going to get one in every school. If we can get the school board to participate, you know, hopefully, we can do that and we'll have a few more officers throughout Jackson County. But in addition to the protection for our students, we've got just the benefit of having more deputies throughout Jackson County. So if there is an absolute emergency that happens, you know, Skyline or North Sand Mountain or somewhere else, Bryant, the farther reaches of Jackson County, maybe we can respond much more quickly. If we've got a deputy in this area and they absolutely have to get somewhere for an emergency need, then we can respond to that as opposed to having to wait thirty to forty-five minutes, maybe even an hour for a deputy to get to that area. Support of our volunteer fire departments. I know we've got several volunteer firefighters here today. This is just, you know, again, another important thing because of a shift in the funding. Again, this is another thing the town of Skyline has probably seen with the shift in the millage rates and millage tax. Our fire department here is, lost a few dollars. I'm not sure exactly how many it was for Skyline. But again, supporting fire departments is incredibly important. And one of the best examples, I guess I can use, is the fire that happened in Hickon about maybe a month and a half ago now, six weeks or so. We had eight county departments, one Georgia department, one DeKalb County department respond to that fire. So just because that fire department's not immediately around you does not mean that someone in your community's not going to have a need for that fire department to respond in the future. So that was a great example of our departments working together and all the folks coming together for that fire. But with this funding change, I know I've also heard, I think there are three departments that are of high risk of closing due to, you know, the funding and situations like that. So if they don't come up with some sort of funding to cover this funding loss, then we could lose some departments. Of course, if you live in an area where a department has to close, your insurance rates are going to go up. If you live next to an area where that department closes, now you're sending your resources next door and not keeping them kind of local. And how many, I'm not really sure, how many fire districts do we have in the county?
Seventeen.
Seventeen? So again, you know, with seventeen fire districts, if you drop two or, if we were to lose all three, you're spreading, again, those resources from those seventeen districts. Now you're having to fill up three of them with other existing departments. So in addition to all of that, I think the bottom line of this is that we need to support our fire departments. The county, as far as I know, has never given an annual appropriation to fire departments. And these are folks, again, you guys, that are putting your lives on the line. You answer to the, you have the wrecks. And I saw a lot of the photos I got to visit with fire department up here a couple of weeks ago. A lot of the photos from the shoot there, all the wrecks you respond to. And I know that, you know, when we have storms, you clear the trees from the road. And then, of course, you know, in the case of fire, you respond to that. So the volunteer time, sometimes putting your own dollars into this. We understand that as a commission. We feel very much the need to support our fire departments through this sales tax. Community industrial business development, I think this is where we get the dollars back. Right now, you know, we have Google, which is a six hundred million dollar investment in Jackson County. Jackson County Commission coffers stand to see very little from that investment. Because, because the way the tax structure works, we have to evade our taxes in order to get those businesses here. So we don't get property tax. If we had the sales tax, we wouldn't get it from them. But with the sales tax, where the dollars would come in would be all those contractors. Everybody that's working to build those facilities, everybody that's going to be working to tear down the Widow's Creek facilities. Those folks spend money and hopefully, a lot of local folks, but all the folks that come in too, are going to spend money in Jackson County. And with the sales tax, we can benefit from that. Right now, again, if we move forward like we are today, we stand to see very little. We probably would not even see our investment return from what this, the county put into getting doing it. We would not see that investment return based on how the tax structure is right now. So I think it's a pretty profound statement, a six hundred million dollar investment, probably one of the largest investments we'll see in Jackson County, if not the largest investment we'll ever see from this point forward. And we, you know, we stand to see little to nothing from that benefit. Now, I do want to clarify, TBA and LOOP tax, we expect will have one year of jump because of that, but then will continue to go down because the Belfort plant is under depreciation. So it'll help us kind of cover our losses for one year, we expect, but it will continue to go down. So again, the way the process works, why this is so important, industrial development, it helps all our communities. When we bring industry and business into Jackson County, that means more tax dollars for Skyline or Scottsboro or Stevenson or whoever else throughout Jackson County. If we can, if we can get some retail or fuel business or whatever in Paint Rock Valley and Bryant area and Bridgeport where we can keep those folks in Jackson County, that's more dollars that we're, again, circulating here in Jackson County. So to be able to invest in water, sewer, gas, give incentives, sidewalks, whatever we can do to bring more industry and business into Jackson County. Right now, again, we do it, once we spend the dollars, the dollars are gone. But with a sales tax, if we do that, we see those dollars come back and we see everybody benefit. So to me, that's one of the biggest parts of this as far as a key component that we have to invest in if we want this to be a long-term fix. A lot of these other things are some needs, some, obviously, the general fund, the short-term need and a long-term. But to be able to solve the long-term problem, that's where the long-term fix comes in is through industrial development. And then the final thing is to fix our budget deficit, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. And we get this question a lot too. If we have a deficit of three hundred fifty thousand dollars, why do we need three point three million dollars? That's very simple, because right now, we're not paving roads. Right now, we're not supporting our fire departments. Right now, we're not investing in industrial development near what we need to be investing in industrial development. Obviously, all these needs are not being met, so that's why we went well beyond this three point three, or the three hundred fifty thousand dollars. We could easily pass something or try to get something pushed through. It'd have to go through legislature to fix the three hundred fifty thousand dollars. But what do we do next year when TBA and LOOP tax drop down again? We're still not investing in industrial development if we do that. We're still not paving roads. So this is both a short-term fix, but it also is very much a long-term fix. This is going to carry us for years into the future. And we hope to have, I really do believe we've got this set up in the program right to where we're going to see the benefits from this for years and years and years to come. So before we take any questions or anything like that, the commissioners, do you have anything else you want to add to that? Okay. So questions, comments, concerns?
Again, you might mention what it does, what is not taxed.
Okay, yeah, let me do that real quick. Things that this tax is not applicable to. I had someone tell me, you know, ten percent or one percent of their income that this applies. So that doesn't apply to one percent of your income. It applies to one percent of certain items that you spend. So it doesn't apply to your mortgage. It doesn't apply to rent. It doesn't apply to utilities. It doesn't apply to healthcare. It doesn't apply to automobiles. You know, all those, all those big expenses are not included. And of course, we've looked at numbers and all that. About twenty-three percent of your income, we see, is spent on taxable items. So for everybody, it's going to be different. For me personally, my family, it's about thirty dollars per person, my household. So it's a hundred and twenty dollars a year is what this tax is going to cost me individually. Everybody, you know, spends differently, so you'd have to come up with that number. But our guesstimate is about twenty to thirty-five or forty dollars per person per year is what this is going to cost us. And again, you know, that's low in a sense because we have so many folks that come from outside of Jackson County and spend dollars here. Yes?
Yes, my name's Joe Anderson, I'm a new business owner here in Skyline. And I pay my taxes every month to the state as far as sales tax goes. And there's this little separate key where it says, your local tax. Part of it goes to Skyline, part of it goes to Jackson County. And it said that you guys don't get that money. So where's it going?
We write a check every month. Once we receive those dollars, we write those checks to the Scottsboro Board of Education, the Jackson County Board of Education. Split up basically.
So that's going for education?
Correct.
Good. What kind of the deal did you guys strike with Google so that the schools in this county can get a beef of? I'd like to hear about that.
The way the state laws work, we, taxes for schools cannot be abated. So whenever, any industry, that's another benefit of industrial development and investment. Any industry that we bring to Jackson County that comes here, those school taxes, they'll continue to be paid because those cannot be abated. That's a state law. So they will continue to benefit from that.
We should get additional.
Yeah, Google's going to be a huge investment. We, it's been estimated one point five million a year across both systems. So it's just going, it is going to be a huge, huge investment or a huge benefit for education.
Another quick question here. Is the Jackson County having to make some kind of an infrastructure commitment? So Google will come in. Can you give me a little bit about that?
There are several entities with the city of Bridgeport, Jackson County. There are a few things that we have to commit to, but most of that has to do with working with them to get federal dollars. Our investment financially is going to be minimal. And that's a big reason why our investment's minimal is because TBA came to the table in such a big way. But on Google, thankfully, our investment is going to be minimal financially. But we will have to be a processing agent for a lot of activities.
Have you got any idea how the school systems are going to beef up their curriculum so that they can meet the needs of Google in the future?
That I don't know. That'd be a question for, for education folks involved there. But yeah, that I can't answer.
Thank you.
Someone here may be able to afterwards.
I do know, I know this, we need to call up his, have him some conversation.
Right.
Thomas Cook, the money that you may be spending on paving will not only be those dollars, but it'll be also matching funds from the state and federal government also? So it will not just be the one and a half million, correct?
Right. We get, right now, we get about five hundred fifty thousand a year, five hundred thirty thousand a year from federal dollars. But if we ever see something like A-Trip again, we've spent what we can spend on matching stuff. So if we ever want to get matching stuff, again, unless we find some way to come up with monies, we've got to have the dollars in the pot. So yeah, if the opportunity comes up where some more federal dollars like that are available, this will give us the opportunity to do that. And hopefully, they'll cut some of their requirements so we can kind of expand what we can pave with. And right now, they limit what we can pave with those dollars. Other questions? So the A-Trip, A-Trip was a state program. And they borrow federal dollars essentially to do several roads throughout Jackson County. Does anybody know exactly how many we did for our part?
It was nine million dollars on the minimum mileage.
Okay. So nine million dollars. Basically, that's an eighty-twenty grant, so we would pay twenty percent of that to get the projects done. So seventeen, seventeen and earlier in A-Trip project, eight was in A-Trip project, is that correct? Both of those roads were done, and of course, you know...
Three bridges.
Yeah, three bridges throughout the county, several other county roads. That was done with those matching dollars. And again, those dollars were set aside in, what is the piggy bank? We ended up borrowing money to help pay for that so we wouldn't have a cash flow issue as we went through this whole process. But that was, that is an example of those matching dollars, an eighty-twenty match. Well, we paid twenty percent of that nine million in order to get those projects done. And it's been a huge benefit, you know. Normally, you're not going to borrow money to pave roads because the length of your loan may last, your loan may last, if not longer, the length of the time to pay it back, but when you're doing a 20% match on it, it's a no-brainer to be able to take those dollars. So, that's what we did in order to pay for all those projects.
We opted to go with the A-Trip, we could've went with the ramp program.
Right. Well, yeah, the A-Trip was benefit, better benefit for everybody throughout Jackson County as opposed to limiting, we would've had fewer roads paved altogether had we went the other way, other way. Other questions? Yes?
Were you going to be paying the new county engineer versus what the previous county engineer made?
All right, we'll be paying the new one $98,000 a year. The previous one made $159 and some change. The reason we settled, you know, that $98, obviously, the state does reimburse for 70%, I think, 75% of that salary. Also, he's had many years with the system, I think we're going to see, I think we're going to see a huge change and a great benefit from this new engineer. I'm very excited, he'll actually start next Monday, but I'm very excited about his participation, and I think folks in Jackson County are going to see a very quick change in the way business is done in our public works department. We know, and that goes back to kind of the notion of working efficiently in Jackson County. We, you know, obviously, I feel like we, this commission has worked hard, Mr. Manning has worked very hard with us to get us to where we're at, all the departments, the elected officials, everybody's put time, effort into reducing budgets to get us to where we're at right now, to keep where we're at, just a $350,000 deficit. That's not going to stop if this tax passes. So, you know, public works, we know that there's things that need to be done, we know there's ways to do things better, and we're going to continue to work on that. But if there's something that we see needs to be done, we're going to continue to make that effort, doesn't matter if, if the dollars are there or not there, we've got to do our best. And I think, again, we'll see some big changes in public works, that's one department we know, the workers know, there's some changes that need to happen out there, so we'll be making those over the next few months as we get our new engineer in place.
And how long's his contract?
Contract is for five years. I think there's a one-year probationary period, and then four years after that.
Now, are you going to hire another assistant revenue commissioner now that Mr. Arnold is officially our revenue commissioner?
That's, we've not really talked much about that, and in current circumstances, of course, it's kind of difficult to plan that, every position, well, we have, I think we've got one to replace right now in the revenue office, but we've, we've lost four or five positions and have cut those and left most of them out.
But that'll be up to him, he's the elected official of that department, to bring it to us if that's what he chooses to do.
I just wondered if we're going to replace him.
At this time, that's not, you know, there's no, we're not moving towards that one. Any other questions or comments?
You've talked about what we will do if we get this passed, talk about what you will do if it doesn't.
Okay. So, so the negative effects, if this tax doesn't pass, you know, we hear all the time, live within your means, you've got to live within the dollars you have, and we understand that completely. The commission's not afraid to make the cuts if we have to make the cuts, but we do feel it's incredibly important that folks understand what those cuts involve. So, the first thing, you know, talking about some of these things that we're, want to do, right now, if we put $0 into road paving last year, you know, that doesn't look very good for the future of what we're going to be able to put into paving next year and the following year, so on and so forth. So, obviously, you know, we're going to have problems with our roadways, and when they get to a certain condition, if we can't maintain them, if we can't pave it, you've got to come up with a solution, and most likely, that'll be, you know, back to the dirt in a sense. So, roadways will continue to have major issues with our roadways, and have to come up with some type of solution, moving those back to dirt, as I've said. We won't have resource officers, we won't be able to invest in industrial development as we want, of course, our fire departments, the possibility of those closing. We've got two left, two places left that we can cut, and actually, before I say that, again, in living within our means, it's also been mentioned that, you know, we get plenty of dollars from all the tickets and the court cases and all those things that happen in Jackson County. We get $325,000 a year from speeding tickets and court case, everything like that that goes on within Jackson County, we get about $325,000 a year. That goes towards our jail, we have a jail budget of $2 million a year. So, this isn't a matter of living within those means, it's a matter of there really aren't enough dollars there to maintain and do all the things that we have to do. And like a business, you know, a business, if you're not selling a certain type of product, or if a certain department is not doing so well, you know, a business has the opportunity to close that. We've tried our best to operate county government like a business, but when it comes to a point, we can't do that anymore, because we can't just close down the probate office, we can't just close down the revenue office, or the commission office, or the sheriff's department, or the jail. So, in that sense, we have to stop acting like a business, and we have to come up with new revenue sources. So, the other, the two things left that we have to cut, there are still appropriations, a few appropriations going to different entities, rescue squads, libraries, what else we got? Health department, yeah, health departments, CERX, the ARC, several different agencies that we still support in that sense, those would be the ones off the top that we would have to cut. And then, the next place we would have to cut, because that would solve, again, the problem, would be closing the courthouse once a week, probably some more elimination of staff within the courthouse. It starts to affect your services in that sense, when you go get your tag, or you go to get your driver's license, or whatever else, you're looking at less opportunity and probably longer lines in doing that. Again, one of the biggest impacts goes back to the roadways. So, the negative effects are there, it's not a matter of, oh, this is just going to blow over if it doesn't pass, we have to cut. We cannot continue to operate on a deficit, we're not, the federal government, you know, we can't do that. So, we've done it to this length because we wanted to make sure that the approach we were heading for was the right approach, that it was the thing that needed to be done, and I feel very comfortable saying this whole commission supports this process, and supports what we've come to with this sales tax, and strongly believes that, you know, this, that making these cuts, if we have to go this last stretch of cuts, it's really going to hurt. Now, again, if we make cuts, it's not just $350,000. We've got to account for the dropping TBA and lieu of tax next year, we've got to figure out what we're going to do for our aging infrastructure, you know, the courthouse, if we don't maintain that building, it's going to have to be torn down, just like the, and that sounds crazy, we, obviously, you wouldn't want to tear that down, but you have to maintain your facilities. The building across from First National Bank not been maintained, we had to tear it down, and that was an asset, you know, for the county. So, for any of our facilities, we have to be able to maintain that and do some things, so some dollars are going to have to be spent there. Again, we've got to account for TBA and lieu of tax loss, we've got to figure out a way to pave at least five or six miles of road a year. So, the cuts are not $350,000, if we have to cut, we're looking at another $900,000, $10 million for next year, you know, going forward. And if we continue to say in lieu of tax drops, that's more cuts in the future. Nothing that we're doing, you know, we're working very hard with departments and different things like that, but there's very limited capability for us to raise our dollars. We can't increase sales, you know, in a quick manner, like a business may be able to advertise and do so. So, we're limited within the confines we have, and that's why these cuts would be necessary immediately if, if, if we don't have the dollars to do this, move forward and do the things we think need to be done. That answer, you know, long way?
It's not Plan B, though.
What's that?
It's not Plan B, that's what you think you'd have to do if the tax doesn't pass.
Right.
So, what's Plan B?
Well, that's, that's the thing.
That is Plan B.
Yeah. You know, we spent, we spent several months out campaigning on this sales tax, discussing, explaining, showing why this is important. If, I strongly feel if it gets voted down, it's not voted down because it's a sales tax, it's voted down because it's a tax, because people don't like taxes. This is the best, I, again, strongly believe, this is the best tax that we can put in Jackson County that will have the least impact overall when we look at the picture, and have the greatest benefit overall when we look at the whole picture. So, you know, as far as Plan B, you know, if you say that's not Plan B, pursuing a property tax or something like that next year, that's great, but, you know, we're looking for a fix, we're looking to solve the problem, and that's what we feel this is. This isn't kicking the can down the road, this isn't saying we're going to get through this year and try to figure out again next year, this is solving the problem, and either way, we want to get a solution to this, you know, and get moving forward. Yes, sir?
Sir, I've got a question. I understand that when bodies of government have to make difficult decisions, sometimes they rely upon experts to give an analysis of the situation. Is there a financial firm or some individual who's responsible for analysis of this financial situation that has made this recommendation to you?
We have our county, our financial administrator, if you look at any of the audits we've been through, the audits will show that, you know, revenues are, show that we've had a budget deficit, that's that side of it. As far as the revenue expenditure side, you know, we could bring someone in, but I think that, you know, if that's what's required, but I really think you're going to find the same thing, it's very obvious the revenues are down, our expenditures are up. Mr. Manning served in the private sector for how many years?
30 years.
30 years. So, that's one big reason why we chose him, because he had a private sector sense of, sense of mind about how budgets and things need to work. Now, he's been very surprised, I think, by how government works, but I really do feel that he's brought that to the county, and we tried very hard to work in that sense. So, I feel comfortable with the analysis that we've had, based on the audits that we've seen, based on Mr. Manning's review of the financial situation, that we have spent, you know, again, this sales tax wasn't something we just came up with, or any tax. We've spent two years studying and reviewing and trying to understand all this, so I feel very comfortable that where we're at is a good analysis of where we are.
Thank you, sir.
And how you replace the $80,000 if the tax doesn't pass?
The $80,000 is coming from, like I said, our piggy bank. It's an investment, I think, that's worth making, and it's something that has to be done. We can't continue to push this off and wait and hope and whatever else we needed to get this done, it needed to be done last year. Of course, you know, we couldn't get it through the legislature last year, so we did this year, and we just need to get it done. So, it'll come from that piggy bank, it's unfortunate, but that's, we've got to make the investment to see where our future is, I think it's worth it.
Can you talk a little bit about how the, the current distribution of the sales taxes work between the city and the county, and how money spent in Scottsboro goes to help the city of Scottsboro, and money spent by county residents and fairer support for the city is, and then kind of what the population is between the city and county?
Okay. Well, the, the big thing, I guess, what you're saying, kind of how, when we spend dollars in Scottsboro, how's that affect the whole picture? That's kind of one of, you know, that's a huge benefit, actually, of this sales tax. Right now, when you spend dollars in Scottsboro, if you go to Walmart, or the restaurants, or whatever else you do with business in Scottsboro, those dollars are staying in Scottsboro, with the exception of the, the two-cent tax we have for, you know, the county, that gets split up between the county and city school systems. But those three, those three cents that you're paying in Scottsboro, that stays in those city mothers, that helps their resources. So, again, if you go to Walmart once a week, and you spend $100 a week, or $200 a week on groceries, or whatever else, you're not supporting your county roads, you're not taking care of your fire departments, you're not taking care of the sheriff's departments, you're not doing any of those things when you spend those dollars in Scottsboro, or, I mean, really, if you spend those in any municipalities. So, obviously, Scottsboro's where most of the dollars are spent, I think the mayor told us last week, it's about $2.8 million per penny that they receive, is that right? Do you remember that, Mr. Manning?
He said $2.8 million.
Okay. Per penny, I think.
That was on city residents.
Right. So, so, you know, those dollars, again, we're spending all those dollars there, but we're not seeing that benefit throughout Jackson County. So, by having this penny tax in place, now, all, you know, and there's, I'd say, a huge amount of folks that shop within the city of Scottsboro do not live within the city of Scottsboro. So, now, we're spreading those dollars back throughout the county. That's not going to happen, again, if we isolate where that tax is collected with this, now we can spread that throughout. So, I think that answers the first part, and what was the second part of that question?
Just the, roughly, the population percentage within the city versus out of county.
Roughly 14,000 within the city limits, about 49,000, or 39,000 throughout the rest of the county.
You said 28%.
Oh, 28%, what the mayor of Scottsboro had mentioned, within the city of Scottsboro, so...
But those city residents, if they spend money within the city, should this tax pass, actually, those dollars would, would still come into the pool of money that would go out into the county.
Right. Yeah, that was, I won't get too much into the proposal Mayor Potter had last week, but I don't think it's the right way to go. So, yes, those dollars from this penny will be spread throughout Jackson County. Other questions or comments? Yeah, I know, did you want to add something before we...
Well, I just wanted, basically, I'm the administrator here, so that means I work for you guys. I work for everybody in our county, and my job is to try to do the best we can do with the funds that we have to operate. And that doesn't mean just out here in the county, people in Scottsboro. So, my job is to, is to work for everyone in this county, and analyze the data, and try to give these guys the best information they can to make their decisions. But I think it's real important for me to talk, not as an administrator, but as a county resident. So, most of the things I want to touch on right now come from myself being a county resident. I have an advantage of knowing the numbers that make this up, but just from a county resident's side, this is more or less where this is. And I'll kind of read it, because I don't want to miss the points, I think they're real important, and I think most of you will agree with me. I'm a local county resident, I've lived in Jackson County all my life. Why would I support a one-cent sales tax? I mean, that's, I've got, I can talk all night on why I would support it, but I want to just condense it down for you. This current commission that you're, you're looking at, they inherited a lot of problems, they're not trying to place blame or anything like that, but they inherited a lot of problems. Somebody should've seen some of this freight train coming a few years ago, and didn't. So, we just have to accept what we're dealt and what we're dealing with right now, and what may have worked 30 years ago does not necessarily work anymore. And our county is strapped to some things that were done 30 or 40 years ago, and it may have been good then, and it may have worked then, but that doesn't work now, okay? And I personally have never understood the logic of leaving county government completely out of the sales tax collection here. I mean, other governments, the city thinks, give me my 3%, trust me with it, I'm going to use it, okay? Everybody needs a revenue stream to work, and how any commission or any legislators ever left county, your county government completely out of sales tax is beyond me, and I just don't understand it. The commission, they're very concerned in spending their money wisely. Does anyone out here think that they are presenting a, this one-cent sales tax, sales tax proposal to win a popularity contest? Does anyone think these guys are doing this to try to get re-elected to their next term? Now, they're doing this because they've studied it, they've looked at it, they live here, and they feel like this is the best way for our county to go. And I would love to see other people get on board, and I would love to see other cities and towns get on board, and help make Jackson County a better place, that's, that's my thought. It was a real tough decision, and I admire the guys for stepping up and taking care of this. Cost, if we've estimated, and we've looked at it, originally, there was a number thrown out, discussed, that was $60-something dollars. That basically was taking 53,000 citizens, dividing it by 3.3 million, and that equaled about 60 bucks. Once we got information from the Chamber of Commerce on the amount of tourism dollars that's coming into this county from out of state, it's mind-boggling. So, that number changes tremendously, and we all feel like we're looking at about $25 to $35 per person on, on this cost. Most, all of my taxable income is spent here in Scottsboro, live here all my life. That rate equates to 8% as we mentioned out here, 9% in Scottsboro, that's where I buy most everything that I need. Hardly anyone that I've talked to in the past few months realized that county government gets none of the sales tax. So, don't, don't feel that bad if you didn't know it three or four years ago. I didn't know the percentage, I knew they got a little bit, but I didn't know that. And as we went around, nobody understands that. So, we're trying to clear all this up. But this monthly collection comes into the office with me, we process two checks, cleared out, 69% to the Jackson County Board, and 31% to the Scottsboro City Board of Education, and that account is cleared. So, we get none of that, and I think we've made that clear, but again, no one previously understood that. To say Jackson County's sales tax rate is high at 2%, here are the facts, people, this is not just made up. And first, please keep in mind, we can do nothing about the 4% sales tax, we can do nothing about the 3% city tax at Scottsboro, or the 2% out here, that's out of our hands. So, regarding county tax, 26 counties are already at a higher rate than ours, most of those have already moved to 3%, some are as high as 4.5%, where it's called a special sales tax. 22 counties are at 2%, 2% like us, but... 22 counties are at 2% like us, but 11 of those 22 get a good portion of their sales tax to help operate their government. We get nothing. That leaves 19 counties with a lower rate, and 10 of those get a portion of the sales tax to operate their government. I assure you that all these other counties that are lower, they're looking right now, too. They're facing some of the same problems we are, and they're looking at the same problems we're looking at. Residents that live in the fringe area, I've heard this, if you live in extreme northeast Jackson County, you may be five minutes from Kimball, will you drive all the way to Scottsboro instead? Good question. Probably not, but it's not because of the sales tax. It's a convenience issue for these people. They don't, it's not, it's not whether it's 9% here or 8% there. It's five minutes to drive to Kimball, it's 35 minutes to drive to Scottsboro, so it's a convenience issue. Sales tax doesn't come into play with the fringe areas that we're losing already. And when I go out of town to buy something, and probably like some of you guys, I go because it's not available in Scottsboro. I need something that's not here, or there's a restaurant I'm going to eat somewhere or something. But I try to shop locally, and I think most people here do, but there's just some things that Scottsboro doesn't offer, and we all go out for that. County roads are not going to spend much time, they've done covered that good. Gas taxes are down. He mentioned the numbers, but to give you another idea, we're going to get less gas tax money this year than we got 10 years ago. Now, that's pretty sad, but that's the facts, less than we got 10 years ago. Counties that have better roads put more money than just their gas tax money to their roads. And that's, that's what's happening around, and we have to look at another way to put money toward roads. Volunteer fire departments, I want to touch on that because if you live in the county like we do, and if you live in a lot of the small towns in our counties, you have an emergency, you dial 911, state staff doesn't come to your house. It's the local volunteers. Those guys are going to be the first one here and very possibly help save somebody's life or assist in some way. And these people get out in all hours of the day and night, all kinds of weather, they don't get paid a dime, and then they have to get up and go to work, just like we do the next day. And with the cuts that are facing them, some of these departments are going to struggle, and we need to support these guys. I mean, this is a very important thing. I've seen them work, I've seen them in my driveway, and you cannot put a price tag on what these guys do for us. I mean, I cannot put a price tag on that. And touch on homeowner's insurance, drastically could change if the ratings drop or if one closes. I just think it's critical that we would look at what's facing us there. Think, we all agree the world we live in, getting more dangerous, threatening more every day. The maniac in Chattanooga, what if he picked a school to do that? I mean, can we just say, well, I don't want to put anybody toward resource officers? I mean, we can't put one in every school, but we want to put them close to all the schools where we can get some response time quicker. We feel like that's a very important need, and we feel like the board will help out in that. But this is only going to get worse. I mean, and the way I look at that as a county citizen, why should our county teachers and our county students not be provided a level of protection like city schools get or most other schools get? Our teachers are just as important as anyone. And we see a dire need to get more deputies on the road where they can respond quicker to a school or an emergency anywhere. And this commission, all I'm trying to say, because I'm not an elected position here, so these guys are elected, and again, I compliment them for being able to step out and make this, take this issue that we're facing and not kick it down the road for the next commission a few years to worry about. I mean, so hats off to them for that, but from a non-elected position, I'm 100% behind them. And I'm all in this for investing my $25 to $35 a year for myself and my wife for all of these issues that we just discussed. And I just ask each one of you to think about this as it would go forward. And if it's important to you, talk to everyone you know. Talk to your family. Talk to those people that live out in the county like we do. And it's coming up pretty soon, and it's a chance that we can, I really think we can move this county to another level, but it is going to take a little bit of money. And I don't know of anything else today that doesn't take more money now than it did 30 years ago. So please consider this, and thank you very much for your time. Thank you for listening to me. I try not to repeat so much, but it's, I think it's very important that we really weigh this out and look at our future for our kids and our grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other questions or comments? Commissioners, if you have anything?
I'd like to bring out Frizzy Horton.
Our representative, Frizzy Horton, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No.
Okay. Thank you for going.
Thank y'all for coming here.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd just like to say, thank y'all for being professional. That's what that is, for y'all to be professional.
Appreciate it.
And I haven't seen that in county commission in a long time. Y'all are being professional the way it should be done, and I want to represent.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We, you know, we have these community meetings, we had them before even this issue came up, but this, I hope, you know, we'll continue to do this next year, the years following, because I think this is a good way for us to get out, visit with folks throughout the county that maybe can't make it to the courthouse to come to a meeting. And as you saw, we snuck a little bit of a work session in there also. But you get to see a little bit about the process, but, you know, whether it's a tax issue or anything, we want the folks of Jackson County to know what's going on. That's why we're here, and that's why we want to share that information. And we need to know from you what your thoughts and considerations are, which is a huge part of this. So we'll continue to do these meetings into the future. I think we've got one more tomorrow night in Bryant that will be focused on kind of the sales tax issue, and then we'll get back to our regular schedule later on in the year. But thank you for those comments, and we hope to continue to show you that we did our best to be responsible and do what we do. Anything else? Do you have any comments? Mr. Arnold, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Probig Allen?
Yes, sir.
Sharon? Mr. Horton, have anything, or did you have anything else?
No, someone had mentioned education and workforce and education. I did try to get a partnership bill passed this year, and actually, it passed 101 to 0 in the House, but it got shot back down in the Senate. That's something that we really need to do, that as, you know, particularly, and especially here and really everywhere, is have workforce development. And hopefully, Smithville again, we'll get it passed this time. But it passed in the Senate, passed in the House, and then went back to the Senate again, had a little amendment on it, and it got shot down. But that's something that really educated workforce, and that's what we really need.
Right.
But hopefully, hopefully, we'll get that done.
That goes into the, as far as this or any industrial development goes, investing in workforce is obviously, so when it comes to education, important that we invest in that as well. Mayor, do you have anything?
Appreciate what you guys are doing.
Thank you.
I agree with you.
Thank you.
Definitely needed this year.
Thank you for hosting us here. Mayor Woodville, did you have anything to add?
No, I appreciate what you're doing. I think it's a real important meeting, and I appreciate you taking it on.
Anything else, Mr. Miller?
I'd just like to say that in the past 35, close to 40 years that I have been associated with county commissions and local government, this is the first time that I can recall that a county commission has had the cooperation that we have with all the elected officials and with our delegation, and we're really proud of that, and I'm proud to be in this commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Yeah, I thank everybody for coming out. I'm not going to say a lot other than I think this tax is, that we're either going to go forward or go backwards. I don't like taxes, hate them, but after, you know, the first couple of years we've seen dealing with this budget, we spent days and days and days of hours, you know, going over these budgets and trying to figure out different ways, and this is what we've come down to, that we, that's the only way, that we feel like we could go forward. You know, I have three kids, and, you know, I want to see Jackson County grow, you know, and be, you know, be the place to be proud of, and, you know, but we have got, I don't want to see it go backwards. I want to go forward.
Good to hear. Thank you, Commissioner Layton.
I want to thank you for coming out tonight, and I urge you to get involved with your county government, get involved with your city, your local people, see what's going on, see what they're doing, see if they're got your best interests at heart. This tax is not popular, it's not fun, but this is about where we go from here. It's not about where we've been, it's not about where we're at now, it's where we go from here. It's going to be very important, August 18th is going to be very important for the future of this county. And I urge you to study the facts. Do not listen to the person sitting beside you unless they've got facts. That's all you need to base your decision on. And if you do that, you're going to do what's right for this county. And thank you for coming.
Mr. Bell?
I'm just glad you, Mr. Laidwell said, you know, this tax proposal is about, you know, where we go from here, Jackson County going to go forward or backing up. We don't have the money to stay where we're at, you know, there is no status quo. We could have very easily borrowed a lot of money and done things we wanted to do or things to make us look good, and that's not what we're willing to do. And this vote's either, you know, if it's a no vote, we're prepared to do the things we need to do to balance the budget and do the best we can. If it's a yes vote, you know, please come to our commission meetings and make sure we're doing what we say we will do. And I thank everybody for coming out.
And in borrowing money, we couldn't pay it back, so.
Yeah.
You know, we, again, we appreciate everybody coming out tonight. The bottom line, just like Mr. Layton will say, as far as what you're hearing, we've not turned anybody away when it comes to sitting down with us and showing, showing the paperwork, showing what we spent. We feel like we've cleared up the budgets quite a bit to where it's very, much easier for us to understand as a county commission and for everybody, you know, if you want to come sit down, we can go through that process. But the bottom line of it is, if you have a question, you know, I think these guys are very much available to answer those questions. All of our elected officials, I think, are very willing to answer those questions. So if something comes up, please, you know, call us or visit with us, stop in, whatever the case may be, and ask us that question. We want to get the information out there, and we're going to continue to work hard to get that information out there. As it's also been said, this is about going forwards for the county's future, and that's what we really believe this is going to do. And we really do hope the citizens of Jackson County, and August 18th is the election day, we hope the citizens of Jackson County vote to give us a chance, to show you that we can put those dollars into something that's really going to benefit Jackson County for the future. So we look forward to that, and we'll continue to work the next few weeks to do all we can to see that happen. So with that, again, thank you all for coming. I guess that concludes everything we have. I think some of us will probably stick around a bit if you have any further questions, and we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion of a second.
Please.
All those in favor, say aye. The opposed side, aye. We are adjourned.